... which identified where the funds are going for, where those amounts are going. We did have them going into the clerk of court computer funds, but those, but, but one of the grants will go into the general fund of the municipal court and the other will go into the court capital fund. So that's really just a housekeeping issue in terms of where those monies belong. Moving on, we have appropriation and appropriations and transfers to discuss. We will be talking about, or we need to, the ordinance will discuss the moving of funds from the sewer fund to the sewer debt fund. We are going to pay $176,700 on our, on the note that we owe for our improvements to the wastewater treatment plant. And then we also have a transfer of $20,000 we will need for arts parks and recreation. That will be moving from Fund 273 to Fund 271 for the community center. Moving forward, we have the note rollover and that is again for the improvements to the sanitary sewer, the, our improvements. And this is, as noted by the auditor, this is due on August 30th. So for many of these items, we will be suspending the rules in order to get them completed in a timely manner. And, and that's the case for this note rollover as well. We will meet, we suspended the next reading in order to cover the note rollover. We also have assistance with citizens of the city of Athens utility bills. And I wanted to, I believe this is, and correct me if I'm wrong, President Nisley, this is part of the program that we will have with HAPCAP where citizens can donate monies to help people with utility bill relief during COVID-19. And is that correct, President Nisley?
That is correct. And we checked with Law Director Aliz and because the money, after discussions with the auditor and the mayor, we realized that the money donations that community members may want to make can go directly to HAPCAP for utility assistance to, you know, citizens of Athens. And they will help us administer that program for no fee. And we won't need a piece of legislation, but we did want to make council members aware of that and also the general public so that if they, in fact, this is what started the whole idea was that a citizen in the Near East side wrote to city council saying, I'd really like to help. I know there are other people out there in Athens who are having a hard time right now. And there's since been another person who grew up in Athens who contacted me and said, I want to help. So there's an interest out there in the program. We're very grateful to Jessica Stroh and Kelly Haddas at HAPCAP for, you know, helping us with this program.
You. Another item on our agenda, more on the personnel, or both finance and personnel, is regarding a request from the Director of Engineering and Public Works to fill a position in EPW that has been vacant for over a year. It has been vacant since March of 2019. It is the Assistant Director position. It is pay grade nine. The beginning rate for that position is $54,953.60 a year. And the benefits add about 30%. And this position is split among water, sewer and streets in terms of the funding. The Director of Public Works, Director Hetty, has been putting in a lot of extra hours since he's been on board really, and certainly since this position has not been filled. And it, it does appear to be a position we need to fill. And the auditor, I believe, recommends filling this position.
Excuse me, Sam. I do not, I do not. I sent you the information, but I do not recommend filling that position.
Okay. I don't know if council would like to, if the Finance and Personnel Committee has any discussion items about filling this position. If you've read the long explanation and details about the open position from Director Hetty, you'll have a lot of information there. You've just heard from the auditor that she does not recommend filling this position at this time. It is true that we are using funds from these, from these different lines, you know, as we, as we said tonight, talking about paying the note rollover. I, I, I understand Director Hetty's reasons for, for wanting the position to be filled. Does anybody on the Finance and Personnel Committee have any comments? Yes, Member Snidely?
I think Member Reisner had his hand up before I did.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed it. Member Reisner.
Oh, yeah. I'm, I'm a little wary about trying to fill this position right now. I mean, revenues are, are flat, expenses are, are not. We're telling everybody in the public domain that, hey, this is the time we got to pull together, sacrifice, do more with less and so on. And my biggest fear is that somewhere around the beginning of winter, we're going to look at our budget and we're going to have to say, someone's going to have to be laid off. And I don't know how in the world we're going to be able to say, well, we just hired someone, but we may also have to lay some people off. And I don't want to be in that position when that happens. And I, I just don't see the urgency right now of filling the position, not, not giving our financial situation. That's it.
Snidely?
Thank you, Member Crowell. I did read through the letter that was provided explaining justification. And although I think I know the answer, I would like to give Auditor Hecht some time to explain why she does not recommend it at this time.
Well, first of all, I never saw the letter and I didn't know anything about it today, until today, when I saw the agenda. So looking at the cost of that position, it's, it's a new position. We only had one person in there from before who was not in there very long. And I just have to wonder what's so different now that after a year and, you know, a year and a half, we need to fill that position. And, and Member Reisner is, is right. The sewer fund is pretty tight. That person's paid out of all three. The street fund, at some point will show a loss in revenue. I mean, it is already, but it will affect it more as time goes on because they depend on some tax dollars for that. And we know that those, that revenue has gone down. And yeah, I just think it's really hard to justify, you know, if you're talking about morale and everything else, laying off other people and then rehiring this position that we've lived without for a year and a half, number one. And number two, it was just created once Bob Hetty got in there. And they have a lot of stuff going on. But I, I guess my other question would just be, and as I said, I didn't get the letter, I didn't know this was in the mix till today. Have they looked at any efforts to, you know, maybe reorganize their department and do some of the things some of the other people are, are doing before jumping on, on this new hire?
Thank you, Auditor Hecht. And before we get a chance to get answers to those questions, I want to ask real quickly, why wouldn't you be in the loop before it would come to us? I guess it's more of a question for the mayor.
If no other, Finance and Personnel, yes, Member Katsas?
Thank you. I was just kind of waiting, waiting my turn. I did have, so just looking at businesses and where they're cutting back, I don't think that we have enough, enough data right now based on what our fall is going to look like with the, with the university and with our businesses. I think that it's, it's, it's a hard time to make this decision. It's something that could be kind of looked at in the near future, but I think currently right now, that's, that's kind of where I'm at and what I'm feeling.
Thank you, Member Katsas. Administration, Mayor Patterson?
I think, I think, Tom, you had something that you wanted to say. I saw you raise your hand.
Yeah, just a slight comment. This, this position existed under Director Stone. Andrew Doherty was the Assistant Director when Andy Stone was still Director of EPW. And so-
Apologize. You're right, Tom. Yeah. Not for very long. I know that.
Right. So there was clarification here. So since Director Hetty's, and he indicated this in his letter, that position's been vacant. And so he has no second or captain of police or captain of fire, that kind of thing. And so he and I had discussions very recently and then they just briefly carried over with the mayor within the last two weeks. And we thought, heading into the fall, that there might be an opportunity to, to fill this position. Of course, it was, would be completely predicated on financial ability. And then I would say enough's happened in the last seven days that, that could make that extremely difficult. And I understand the trepidation that everybody, everybody's expressing. Ours was more of a showing to council that there definitely was a need from a structural perspective to fill the position, but of course, it would have to be based on finance. And like I said, I understand what's happened in the last seven days or the last three or four days alone to, to cause some concern there. So that's really the, was the point in bringing it to council was if council agreed that there was structural need.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Fall, I see you. Just a minute though, before we go to other members of, of council. Member, I mean, Auditor Hecht, did you want to say something additional?
I, I was just going to comment that I appreciate your comments, Tom. And I, I guess I'd feel more comfortable making, you know, that, that position at the very minimum without any kind of increase, which we tend to end up doing for people we like, is going to be over $70,000. I, I really think we're not exactly sure what the university is going to do. And I really, you know, like you said, things have changed so much. A lot of things are changing and people are changing. I just today got a conference canceled that they thought they'd be able to go ahead and have in September and do a mix if you wanted to come in person or you could do it online. And they're just canceling it outright because we just don't know yet, you know? I, I feel more comfortable if we waited a little bit on, on something like that.
President Nisley?
I just wanted to let you know that Robert Hetty is online so that if council members or Finance Committee members had any questions that they wanted to address to him directly or ask for a comment. Thank you.
So if there are no other comments from Finance and Personnel members, we can turn it over to the public or other members of council. And Member Fall has something to say.
Thank you. I, I agree with both Jeff and Auditor Hecht about timing. It's just so, you know, it's so unsure about everything right now. I'm wondering about, is, is Director Hetty getting like time and a half for the extra time he's putting in? What are the costs of not getting the position? Is there other way that we can stretch some people or something like that that's creative or something? So, thank you.
Director Hetty is not overtime eligible. He's a exempt employee. So, so he, he doesn't get paid for the extra hours and he does put in considerable hours beyond 40 a week. And, you know, he works a lot from home, works over the weekends and things like that. He and I send emails pretty much constantly while we're awake, seven days a week. So, yeah, so we, we haven't, haven't discussed that short of a proposal that stopped at, the mayor and I for considering a pay increase, but we haven't acted on that.
Thank you, SISD, and Member Grace.
Thank you, Member Crowell. I, I know just from, from my conversations with Director Hetty and in, in working on organizing information to bring to council for projects, that, that he has been working a lot of hours. He's working really hard since he, he joined us here in the city. And so I just wanted to express my, of the hours he's working, but also to bring up that, the question of how, how might the overtime of EPW employees be impacted by the hiring of, of an Assistant Director? Because I believe there currently is some overtime, just in order to, to get the work done. And so I don't know if, if that's something that we should look into. Would some of that overtime be taken, those jobs adjusted at all?
It's, it's a different type of work that Director Hetty performs. You know, he's, for instance, one of the things that he has indicated that he's behind on are permit reviews that he does as, as a city engineer, as well as the director. And so these are largely administrative tasks that, that maintenance workers and, and even supervisors aren't uniquely set up to do. And so it falls to he and essentially Jessica Dine to get the lion's share of this work done.
Thank you for that clarification.
Member Clodfelter?
Well, I agree. From what I've heard, that, that Director Hetty is working really, really hard and I wish we could give him some relief. But right now, I agree with Member Reisner and with Auditor Hecht, that this is just too much of an uncertain time to do this. I think we need to see what happens at OU. If the, if most of the students will actually come back on September 28th or not. And if they end up holding the whole semester online, it's possible that hundreds of faculty members will leave town. And I, I just think we have to, we, we, I think it would be prudent to wait at least a couple more months before making any large investments like this. But maybe, and, and this would be, you know, up to the mayor and Chief Pyle and others, maybe this position could have priority once we are in a position that we could start hiring again for the city.
Thank you, Member Clodfelter. I would just like a little clarification from, from some comments that were made about the last three or seven days since we've been off in the month of July, although I've met with some of you weekly in July. I assume you're talking about the decisions made at Ohio University in terms of the return of students or no, Mayor Patterson?
Well, I mean, that's part of the calculus for, for sure, Councilmember Crowell. But more importantly, it's watching the revenue in the city of Athens. You know, one of the things that you're all aware of is that we were fortunate to receive $460,000 from the CARES Act. And initially, we were looking at where, where and how we could use that money. And fortunately, we found out that, that there was more that we could apply that money for, for city operations than, than we thought previously. But even with that, we're still looking at a lot of uncertainty as things have unfolded. Certainly, certainly the university's decisions on things is, is part of that calculus, Councilmember Crowell. There's other things that are already underway that we're looking and having to make some really hard decisions on for other departments. We're seeing some budget lines that are critically low. You know, most notably is arts parks and recreation where we're seeing the community center budget, but we're seeing it in other places, other budgets. And so it's, it's really a difficult time. But I, I do want to say to council and to the viewing audience that I'm, I'm glad that council has in front of you that the plate that Director Hetty has in front of him. There are so many projects going on right now or in the near future, whether it's under design engineering or projects that are underway, that for the expertise that Director Hetty has and his credentials, along with the Assistant Engineer Jessica Dine, that again, between the two of them spreading that workload to have an assistant, if not now, at some point in the future, you know, that, that given that workload, that they really do need a level of relief, even if it's people who can pick up some of the other things that, that, that don't need an engineer's eye. But there's so much there. But again, we just wanted to bring this before council and get council's opinion on things. And trust me, nobody knows more than the auditor and I in tracking the city's budget with where things are at right now. And there's just a huge amount of uncertainty.
Which, do you mind, Member-
Auditor, please.
Just to add to that, as everybody needs to keep in mind, we all know who the largest supplier in town is. But the, whether students return to campus affects every business in town. Whether it's them buying and spending money or working at, at these businesses, whether they're going to stay open and, and, you know, they're, the number of employees that these businesses have. And so it's farther reaching than just OU employees paying their, you know, withholding tax. So just to keep that in mind, too.
Thank you, Auditor. Before I go, Member Fall, I just want to point out that Mr. Hetty has offered a comment. And he does point out that the Assistant Director of EPW covers supervisors. And so when that Assistant, Assistant EP Director is answering callouts, that, that prevents overtime hours being logged by, by, by non-exempt employees for the overtime rule, which is good information. Director Hetty, thank you. Member Fall?
Well, maybe at this point, I'm, I'm kind of getting the gestalt of council saying, hmm, this is really scary. Maybe we can look at something more short term of hiring a specific project person who takes A and B, or look at some of those things that doesn't require that engineer and, and put somebody in for short periods or project based or something that would help out, but wouldn't be a commitment forever sort of thing. So, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on the EPW Assistant Director position? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. They are much appreciated. And the information from the mayor's office and from the auditor. Moving on, we have a, the United Senior Center lease extension. This is space that the United Senior Center uses in the community center. And we would like to extend their lease. I believe their current lease is up at the end of August. And we have been in negotiations with them to extend their lease at their current terms. In discussing this with the auditor, we often look at increases to fees, rents paid for utilizing city space at the end of contracts. But given the current situation with COVID and obviously our, our support of what they do, we are considering a contract that extends their lease until, I believe it's next July. Does anybody, yes, is that Member Snidely shaking her head? It's July 31st, maybe of 2021?
2021. Yep.
Okay. And then if there are, as I look around the room here, no comments.
I, I just wanted to mention-
Yes, Member Snidely, go ahead.
Yeah, just to echo what you said, that I would, I see no issue with this, given all the uncertainty, which we already kind of outlined it with the previous item, and an ability to support the programming that they do. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Members Snidely. Yes, Member Reisner?
Can any of the care monies in any way be, be used to help out the seniors with their program or fees or anything?
I believe they, I believe that the information we got from the small cities indicated that they, those types of programs were eligible. Mayor Patterson?
Yes, they can. The city, with our apportionment of the CARES Act money, we can provide a grant to United Seniors. One of the concerns that the United Seniors is having right now, Joyce Lewis, who's the Director, is face-to-face connectivity among members of United Seniors. Most of them either have a landline or maybe a cellphone. But there's a real need for our seniors to at least be able to do what we are doing right now, to where you're face-to-face with each other. And, but also connectivity to where they can be doing things like shopping online for Kroger, at Kroger or things like that, for them to have Wi-Fi connectivity, hotspot connectivity, and, and in some cases, having a tablet, which they may not have. So there is certainly a need for our senior citizens and those who are part of United Seniors. So we can, we can provide a grant to United Seniors if they needed something for, like I said, Wi-Fi hotspots and tablets.
That's great. Any other Finance and Personnel Committee members to have anything to say on this? Okay, yes, Member Clodfelter?
Thank you, Member Crowell. I think what Mayor Patterson just said is wonderful. I think it would be fantastic if our seniors could be provided, be provided with hotspots or tablets or whatever, so that they could actually communicate while, right now while staying safe at home. I'm, I just, I'm curious, is anybody reaching out to the Director of United Seniors to let them know that they could apply for this? Or?
Yes.
Yeah? Okay, just checking because it sounds great. I really hope that that can happen. That would be so beneficial.
Auditor?
I just have a comment about our, our COVID money. And the mayor has done really well at working around some of these things. We aren't allowed to use that money to pay people's, people's bills that go right back into our coffers. And that's part of the reason the utility assistance is not going to go through the city and/or our money. Because, I mean, if you just think about what that means, but the idea, we're going to do some rent and mortgage assistance. And hopefully, if they can get help paying those obligations, that they can, will then have money to go ahead and pay their utility bills for the city. But either way, and I think it's the same thing with the mayor, we can't just, you know, pay their rent and the community center from that money, but we can help them in other ways. And I think it's, it's really, I'm, I'm really pleased. And I, I think, Member Crowell, we went back and forth about this, that, that they, you know, have limited access and can't go through their programs right now. And I'm just really glad that they're continuing to pay their rent and do what they can to communicate with the seniors. Because then that gives us the outlet to- communicate with the seniors, because then that gives us the outlet to work with this grant that the mayor wants to give them. We have to have somebody there who will find these seniors and assist them so that they're still connected and all that kind of thing. So I think it's a good situation, and yeah, I'm just glad they're still hanging hanging in there, because that is revenue for our community center still, so.
Member Fall?
Well, one thing is, is that the schools are also struggling with this issue of hotspots and tablets. The state has indicated they want to go forward with this huge broadband bill that they are passed. So it would behoove us if we could all coordinate so that it will spread money even further. And and so that's what I would suggest. Thank you.
Mayor Patterson?
If I could speak briefly to what councilmember Fall was just indicating, I was on a call this afternoon at 2 o'clock with Governor Dewine, with several, about 10 other mayors across the state. And that is one of the thing, the initiatives that the governor has taken on to where he's setting aside $50 million that will go towards K through 12 broadband Wi Fi tablets and whatever. And so I certainly reiterated with the governor that we have some significant need in that particular space here in Athens County. So you're right. I mean, I'm hopeful that money does find its way into Southeast Ohio, at least a fair portion of that based upon need.
Thank you very much. And so we'll hear more about that during our regular council meeting. Moving on, on our Finance and Personnel agenda, we have a prior year bill that needs council approval as it's over $3,000. This bill is with from the Athens Police Department, and it is to pay for our, it's the payment that is due for our smart parking meter purchases. So this is for the IPS company, and the auditor supports staying current, obviously, on our on what we owe and and paying this prior year bill. So council will also see that coming up in our next public meeting. Any discussion on the APD prior year bill? Member Cotsus?
Yes, member Crowell, thank you. And, you know, I don't need to reiterate that this is a different year, but I know that when we entered into the IPS contracts, we were expecting that we were probably going to make more money from our meters. And I'm just kind of curious to know where we might be right now with with the current situation.
Councilmember Cotsus, we're not doing very well at all with the revenue coming in. We track those pretty much every staff meeting. This comes up. I know that Captain Harvey needs to dig a little bit deeper because he, the last report that he had during my staff meeting, he felt that that he wasn't getting the full picture from our IPS meters. So I can certainly get those numbers to council by hopefully next council meeting. But the revenue is down significantly. I mean, anybody walking up and down Court Street at noon sees that there's not a whole lot of parking in the uptown area, to the point that we may have to get people out with lawnmowers and mow between the grass growing up out of the bricks in the street, in the parking spaces.
Yeah. And, you know, and I would, I do want to mention that, you know, the program that the city has put into place, allowing people to pick up food and things like that, where they have the ability to park for free, to encourage a little bit more business. I think that's that's still, it's a great idea, and I'm glad that that's been implemented. So, you know, overall, I'm not, I'm just kind of curious. I'm not not wondering whether we're making the bills or not. I think I think we all know where we're at right now.
Director Pile, do you want to say something?
Yeah, just just a comment. The last time I looked at the numbers, and the auditor could confirm all this, but the last time I looked at the numbers, if they played out to the end of the year, where we were when I looked at them at the beginning of July, we could be down as much as 50% by the end of the year in revenue, both from street meters and from parking citations, which would be on the order, depending on the revenue projections, could be 300, 400,000, possibly more. I see you nodding your head, Cat, auditor, so, yeah. So we're in the hole as far as the paying for those meters and where we were well ahead up until March. So so that revenue is just, you know, we're definitely in the hole. This bill was more for the backhaul. It was a September 2019 bill, and I don't think we were notified notified of it until May or June at the earliest, maybe not even until July. So how that slipped through is, I think it has Captain Harvey scratching his head, too, but we we obviously owe it and need to pay it, so.
So before I go to member Reisner, I'll just point out that this bill is for $6,357.86, and will come from the General Fund Parking Enforcement. Member Reisner and then auditor Heck, member Reisner?
Yeah, this is for the for the mayor. I assume you weren't joking about having to mow or somehow remove the grass, I think is really what you're talking about. If the city is forced to do that, any idea what's it going to cost or we don't do that?
Well, I was somewhat joking, councilmember Reisner, although you do see in, you know, Brick Streets, you see this on Elmwood, you see it elsewhere, where it's pretty typical that during the summer months, we do see grass in various locations growing up through the bricks. Chris Ball would probably hate me if I sent someone out there with a lawnmower to mow it. She's plugging your ears. So no, Jeff, councilmember Reisner, we wouldn't have to do something like that. But I was saying that just because that's how little parking we are actually seeing.
Yeah, I understood that, but I could also see how it, at some point, it does seem a little unsightly. It sort of gives the impression of a of an uptown that's not particularly prosperous and in decline. And in all seriousness, I'd like to avoid avoid that type of damage.
Understood, understood. But just know this, I'm not going to get out there with Roundup, right? Any other?
No, no, no.
Oh, my gosh.
Sheep? Sheep?
Sheep?
No, you want goats.
Goats, oh, goats, that's it, okay.
I have a pressure washer if you need one or two. We can have pressure washer day. Pressure washers could go down and do it.
Auditor Heck, did you have more information to share?
I just was on that that parking meter bill and Service Safety Director Pyle is exactly right. We pay that monthly. We paid August, we paid October last year, and I don't know if this September bill got lost in the mail, it got lost on somebody's desk. I wouldn't say anybody who's seen my office knows that that's always a possibility. And so we're really pretty current on our bills for that. It's just one of those things. And no, we did not know, we weren't notified until just a couple of months ago about that. I think it was June, council was getting ready to go on recess, we didn't really have time to address it right then. And so, but we paid all our other bills, so I don't think it's a huge issue, but we do need to get this paid because it is pretty late.
I think we're all in agreement there. Any other questions or comments about the last year bill? Okay, moving on to the last item under Finance and Personnel for tonight is the CARES Act Grant Program, which is, as commented earlier in the tonight's meeting, emergency relief for rent and mortgage. And this is a proposed program to assist citizens that otherwise would face eviction or mortgage default due to the pandemic. And again, we're reaching out to HAPCAP to be the grantee for this program. And this would would have funds to pay to provide a one month payment so that an applicant can continue to stay in their dwelling for up for the next 30 days. And this program is really designed to help people who are unable to pay housing related costs from this crisis. And they must be a citizen of the city of Athens, and they would have to provide documentation of either loss of a job or reduced hours or being laid off or some other hardship due to the COVID-19 crisis. And then they would also have to have a documented past due rent or mortgage payment. Are there any comments or questions, yes, from the committee? Member Smithley?
Thanks, member Crowell. And I think this is a great opportunity. I appreciate the city administration for getting this underway. I just had a question of clarification. Is this program for homeowners or businesses? And I asked that because when I was reading through the material, I thought I read something about this being for businesses, but now when I reference it, it looks like it's for residents. So could you clarify?
But not necessarily homeowners. It could be it's for renters as well. Mayor Patterson?
Yes, it is for renters or for a homeowner or someone, you know, who's under mortgage but is at risk of being in default of that. So it is, it is not designed for businesses, it is designed for residents.
I must have read something else then. Do we have something else for businesses in here? I see a nod from Debbie here. So I didn't dream that. But what we're talking about right now is for homeowners and renters, so I don't want to confuse anybody. Okay.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it and in support of this. I think it's a great opportunity.
Member Cotsus, remember Reisner, any comments on this piece?
Only, I think it's a good idea.
I agree. Member Claude Felter?
I'm just really glad that the city is doing this. I think it's an excellent idea, and I think it it actually might be a way to really significantly help some of our residents. And from the city's point of view, maybe keep some of them from just leaving town and having to move away or something. So I think that it's it's not only kind and generous, but it's a smart investment in in the health and the the population of our community, and I hope that that money will go as far as possible. I was, I'm, I was also wondering, is there any chance that more money could be added if demand is such that $25,000 goes in a heartbeat?
Mayor Patterson?
Yes. Simple answer to that is yes. I have never felt more strongly about something than this, you know, to have this moved through council, to create this grant that we would grant to HAPCAP and have HAPCAP run the program. You've got in front of you, I hope, the guidelines. And so they, this is right in their wheelhouse. This would be for citizens living in Athens who have great need. I've been holding what we call the COVID-19 Virtual Roundtable for many months now, four or five months, quite some time. And one of the individuals who's part of the Virtual Roundtable has has mentioned many times that once the relief of being evicted has rolled off, and now that's that's something that can actually happen, that there's going to be even more need now going into the month of August. And so I think this is really important. We'll start with $25,000. We'll see how this goes. And member Claude Felter, if we do find that that money is gone through quickly, or looks like it will, we'll go through it quickly, we can, I did ask that the auditor held me out in kind of having another $25,000 set aside, but we'll see how this goes.
Excellent. I'm glad you're you're planning for that contingency. This is, this is great. I'm so happy that the city's doing this.
Member Smithley?
Thank you, member Crowell. Just two things, I wanted to ask if administration felt comfortable enough to consider suspending the rules for this to get it in effect sooner rather than later, once it's ready to go in regular session? And two, once it is approved, that we have a very streamlined communication strategy behind it so that we can get the word out, and then we all do our part to share it with our networks. So that was it.
Thank you, member Smithley. Member Reisner?
Yes. I'd like to know how HAPCAP will communicate with the administration and council about how the program is going and what the demand is and so on. I'd like to, I'd like for us to have some good oversight over over this, is what I'm saying.
That's fine. I mean, I can, I can speak to that, councilmember Reisner. I mean, I will likely be getting, if not weekly, updates at least every other week, getting updates from HAPCAP on how that program is going, because we will need to work quickly if we do find that we're going through the initial $25,000 quickly, that we're going to have to operate fast and get something, you know, a second grant package out to HAPCAP, because this money does need to be pretty much allocated by October 15th, I believe it is, by mid-October, and has to be spent by the end of the year, or else it goes back to the county and the county to the state and onto the Fed, meaning it's going away. So I will certainly keep council updated as I get updates from HAPCAP on this program.
Great. Let's get moving on.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, member Reisner. Clerk Walker did note that this this agreement could go through all three readings since we have plans to meet in special session next Monday. No, not this agreement, member Walker. Okay, that's different. Sorry. So strike that. Any other comments for this mortgage relief or rental relief? Okay, thank you. And that completes Finance and Personnel, President Nisley.
Okay. We'll now move on to City and Safety Services Committee, and that's chaired by Councilmember Grace, with councilmembers Fall and Claude Felter on that committee as well. Thank you.
Thank you, President Nisley. We just have two items on our agenda for tonight. And the first item is amending Ordinance 5120. And this ordinance was authorization for contract construction and construction engineering for the Columbia Avenue Sewer Project. And this is, this is a project that's been going on for quite some time and has been, I'm sure, one of the the many things that has added many, many hours to Director Hedy's workload. And unfortunately, the, through the bid process, the contractor, it's my understanding, drastically underestimated the need for materials for the project. I'm seeing a waved hand from our SSD pile.
Just a clarification, it was the engineer, engineer that put the estimate together.
But not our, not engineer Hedy, the?
No, no, the engineer, the engineering firm that designed the project.
Right, the, through the the design engineering process. And so we are at a point now where this, I believe, work was going to be stopped on this project today because they need authorization for further funding in order to adjust the contract for the materials needed to finish this project. And this, if people remember, goes back to 2018, some, some significant damage that we are fortunate in that we, the city was able to get approval for FEMA to reimburse for 87 and a half percent of the cost of this project up to this date. We are hopeful that this additional appropriation will also be reimbursed at that same percentage by FEMA, but because the But because um the the issue happened in eighteen, we don't know yet whether that that funding is going to come through from FEMA. But the um so that's the long explanation of why uh we need to adjust and amend ordinance fifty one twenty to increase the appropriation um by seventy five thousand dollars. So it um it was one hundred uh twenty three thousand dollars coming from the sewer maintenance fund and um we're increasing that to one hundred ninety eight thousand dollars. Um, so it increases the total um expenditure from four hundred eleven thousand to four hundred eighty six thousand. Are there any any questions from members of the committee? Any anything from, yes, member Katsas?
Yes, thank you, uh, member Grace. The um, in my understanding, did we also need additional easements, um additional property and and paying for for more easements in this project?
That those have been already paid for, but that is part of the reason why, um, you know, when when appropriations are made for big projects like this, a a small extra is usually built into the budget. Less was put in for this one. I believe it was only about a five percent. Um wiggle room was built in initially and all of that was taken up by easements um that that were in addition to what was anticipated. It's again, I I'm conveying what I hopefully understand from Director Hedy. Yes, uh, Director Pyle?
Just a just a clarification on that. Um, the easements that we secured were temporary easements um with an understanding that we would secure permanent easements. As we moved along, uh Director Hedy's made the determination that we don't need those uh permanent easements at this time. Um, and that we do have uh some access to that site for maintenance uh in the future. And if we do uh, you know, have another issue down there, we could always seek other uh additional temporary easements or go after a permanent easement there. Uh, so the need for money or funding for permanent easements has been relinquished at this point.
He did mention that the temporary easements he had determined like that we could get three temporary easements for the cost of permanent easement. And so this believes that the the temporary easements were sufficient and um the the most appropriate um way to go forward at this time. Member Crowell, did you have a question?
Uh, yeah, I sorry, I believe that some of the material needed for this project was riprap. I know mayor and and uh Director Pyle, that there was some indication that some of the ripraps that was stored at the uh Columbus Road uh gas station site could be used. Has that gone forward?
Correct. That's what's that's part of what's keeping the uh repair estimate down. Um, the repair estimate could could have gone as high as four hundred thousand dollars uh with this with this error. Um, and and so we have uh what we think is a fix. Uh, and and part of cost mitigation was using our own uh spoils from not spoils, but riprap that from the uh high-low oil. I don't Columbus Road, I believe, is where we're storing that.
I'd just like to thank the administration for saving that material, salvaging concrete like that a very smart way. I mean, it's it it is needed in our on our hills and in our rivers. Um, it's useful material. And so the fact that we didn't haul it to a landfill and found a purpose for it is saving us money and and uh not filling up the landfill. So thank you for that.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up, member Crowell. That there was a um huge difference and they've worked out who's loading it, who's hauling it, um but using our own material. Um, and I know there was a a lot of effort back and forth to keep this adjustment um as as low as possible when um initially it it could have been um three fifty to four hundred thousand additional, which um would have been really overwhelming. Yes, Mayor Patterson?
Yes, I I kind of just want to remind council that that riprap, it came from the East State Street improvements. Um, and it has gone to armor the Columbus Road bike paths where where the river breached uh as well as um off of West Union um down near the the bridge over the Hocking River that we used some of that riprap to armor the bank that was eroding there as well, where there's an eddy. Um, so we put that that concrete to good use over the years.
Thank you. And Law Director Eliasen?
Just to clarify, there is one permanent easement off of Madison.
Thank you. Any other uh questions? Um, I this will be coming, yes, member Reisner?
Uh, I just want to get it fixed in my head. Assuming everything goes according to plan and we get reimbursed for our share and so on, what would be the city's final costs for this project?
Um, well, let's see.
Four hundred eighty six thousand is what's in that ordinance?
If if we get the eighty seven and a half percent reimbursement from FEMA for the total cost, then the the part not reimbursed would be sixty thousand seven hundred and fifty, if if I punch that into my calculator correctly. Um, and I as it's my understanding that the um FEMA reimbursement at eighty seven and a half percent is promised um to us for the uh four hundred and eleven thousand, the um earlier appropriated amount. But we may not have um, I I know Director Hedy is applying this additional, um but we don't know whether we'll get that. So
So those are those are some chickens we really can't.
Right, so um low lowest would be sixty thousand seven hundred and fifty would be the city's portion of the four eighty six. Um
But the highest could be around hundred and thirty five thousand?
Um, well, it would be the twelve and a half percent of four eleven plus seventy five. So, yeah, a hundred and twenty six thousand, three seventy five.
Okay. Bad timing.
That I I'm sure the uh the residents uh will be very happy for this project to be completed, though. Um
Can we blame it on COVID?
No. Flooding, flooding, yes. But yes, Director Pyle?
Just a a note that that we have, I believe, either we have or will be filing a claim with the engineers uh insurance firm. So that's another potential source of
Oh, good, good to know. I I had not heard that. That's it seems like a very significant error. Um, thank you. Okay.
Two million dollars.
The um in other notes, because this it this project is at a a uh stop work point, um shortly when we come to our full meeting, I will be introducing the ordinance and asking for a suspension so that um the work can can pick up and progress on this. Um, if there are no further questions on um the Columbia Avenue project appropriation, then the next item on the agenda is um just that the city is at a point of needing to um renew our mutual aid agreement with the university um in terms of the um shared law enforcement responsibilities um and the the coordination between Athens Police Department and OUPD. And this is um, I I was wondering, but I didn't reach out to ask prior to tonight, does anyone in attendance know how long the city and OU have have had this mutual aid? Yes, uh, Director Pyle? I I thought you might know. You're muted there. Thank you.
I couldn't swear to the day, but I have a document going back to the seventh uh was the first MOU with the university and city police department. I want to say nineteen seventy two.
Okay, so um this is a um a memorandum of understanding regarding um cooperation between APD and OUPD. And um I believe uh through conversations with our clerk that if we do first reading tonight and then at special session, um have a second reading and then two weeks from tonight would be a third reading and that is able to be approved in time, um thus negating the need for emergency clause. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. Um, does anyone have questions or um? I guess we'll start with the committee. Yes, member Smithley? So I don't see anyone else raising hands right now.
Thank you, member Grace. Is this any different than previous year's agreements?
I don't believe it is, no.
Thank you.
Yes, Director Pyle?
We we simply, Chief Powers and I simply, uh, and it's mostly Chief Powers, by the way, uh, simply improved on some formatting to make it uh read a little easier. And the substance of the document has not changed. It's uh essentially this version of it we put together, I want to say, two thousand and twelve. Also, just to note that the current MOU uh I don't believe expires until October twenty seventh. I could be wrong on that date, but I think we have plenty of time. We don't we don't need to um do any emergencies or anything like that. There's there's plenty of time.
There any other comments or questions regarding this MOU? Okay, thank you very much. That concludes the uh Service Safety Committee for this evening.
Thank you, council member Grace. We'll now move into regular session and our first item of business is establishing a quorum and all members of council are present. Our next item of business is reappointing our clerk of council. Uh, this normally happens every few years, but in this case, um our our clerk uh is retiring from the position on July thirty first, but then immediately beginning, having begun duties on August first. So we need to make a motion so that we could file these records with the auditor's office and the HR office to reappoint Debbie Walker as clerk effective August one.
And been instantly moved.
Moved by uh council member Klaudfelder and seconded by council member Grace.
Thank you, clerk Walker.
Yes.
We're so glad you're
Thank you.
Yes, with much enthusiasm. All right. And uh so uh we have the motion in second for uh approval of the reappointment. And a council member Reisner, yes, you wanted to make a comment?
Have we heard from the the former auditor that she's still interested in the position?
I am, Jeff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion in second for reappointment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. And thank you. Uh, we now have the disposition of the minutes and these would be uh for the regular session held on June fifteenth, special sessions held on June twenty second and July thirteenth. If I can have a motion for their approval?
So moved.
By council member Grace, seconded by council member Reisner. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay, the these minutes have been approved. Next item of business is communications. And so do we have any communications from council members? Council member Smithley and then council member Katsas.
Thank you, President Isley. I just had quickly wanted to thank a few people for the PSA mask mask PSA project that we've been working on. Uh, first to you, President Isley, for your support of the project uh and to Mayor Patterson also for his support. Um, with their uh backing, uh this uh just took off running. Um, we had over thirty people in the community volunteer to participate in this video PSA um and it helped us to get the word out. It 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 was immediately following our ordinance uh that we started working on this project or actually before we started past the ordinance, we started working on this project. Um, and uh we had a number of people participate, including uh Law Director Eliasen, President Isley, the mayor Patterson, uh, Dr. Hecht, uh, and uh member Klaudfelder. So I appreciate that. And this could not have happened at all without Ryan Schwartzoff and Scott Thompson. And I wanted to extend a huge thank you to them um dedicating so much time to get them recorded and um Ryan in particular, and it got them edited and they're all out in the community uh helping to spread that good message. So I just wanted to say that. So thank you.
And uh council member Katsas, and then we'll come back to you, council member Klaudfelder.
Uh, President Isley, thank you. I just wanted to um uh remind people that the um our um our street improvement schedule uh is happening right now. So our paving uh our paving uh annual paving is happening currently on the um Richland Avenue Roundabout. Uh, so it's currently closed. The paving will actually happen tomorrow from eight to three thirty. So don't go there tomorrow. And um but it will be opened back up with uh with um the uh just paving uh just a temporary pavement uh markings, but one to two weeks later, we should have the permanent ones. Uh, we don't expect any additional closures for that, but definitely uh don't use the Richland Roundabout tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Um, and council member Klaudfelder, you had a comment?
I had just a clarifying question from member Smithley. Um, where is that PSA being shown or where can people access it?
It's being, uh, thank you for the question. It's being um shared on our government channel. It's on our YouTube page and our, I want to say, uh, one more Instagram, maybe? I don't know. Um, and Facebook, I'm sorry. Of course, it's on Facebook. I Scott Thompson, thank you for that that chat item coming in. Yeah, we and then we had so many participate and we wanted to uh highlight as many as we could. So uh we decided to make it a series of PSA. So there's roughly, I think, seven or eight that are going to come out, about four people per uh PSA. Um, and I think that yours came out today.
Oh, okay. I just was curious where people could see them, but now I will definitely have. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, the easiest way would be the the city's Facebook page, probably.
Okay, thank you, member Smithley.
Council member Crowell?
Thank you, President Isley. I just want to announce to the public and to council that the Environment Sustainability Commission will be meeting uh this Wednesday, uh, August fifth at six o'clock via Zoom. We will continue to meet monthly uh via Zoom for the immediate future um the first Wednesday of the month. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, and then any other council members? Okay, and I might add, uh, just as an aside, you're mentioning that council member Crowell, um, uh, our government channel director, Scott Thompson, was mentioning that commissions are in full force, meeting and utilizing Zoom. So another thanks to our government channel for doing all this um amidst this makes it possible, makes it workable, makes it makes it pretty easy, actually. They're doing a lot of the work on the background on it, so, yeah. Uh, do we have uh then communications and or reports from other elected officials? Law Director Eliasen? Okay, no report. Thank you.
No, you're on my mic.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mayor Patterson?
I have several things tonight. Uh, President Isley, the first one, thank you, member Katsas, for bringing up the Richland Avenue Roundabout and the paving. They will be putting down temporary markings uh and then come back and put the permanent markings um on the roundabout. So um it's great that we're getting that completed. The other thing is that uh I was just given notice that the Columbus Circle Southern Entrance will be closed to traffic for street repair. Uh, this is down by the laurels. You can still access the laurels through the northern access off of Columbus Circle. So just keep that in mind and that will be tomorrow through Friday, the seventh of August. Um, I received something from Columbia Gas and it's basically um a information for citizens and that uh if if anyone's having trouble paying their Columbia Gas bill, they can contact um Columbia Gas uh and take advantage of a payment system uh or payment plans and assistance uh before disconnection resumes. You can call one eight hundred three four 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 zero seven seven. assistance before disconnection resumes. You can call 1-800-344-4077. Or you can message Columbia Gas, I guess, on Facebook or Twitter. But I would recommend people calling that number. And again, that number is 1-800-344-4077. Apparently, they've been working with others to to have a level of assistance for people who are struggling with their gas bill. Some other good news to share with council and everyone who's watching tonight, and that is that Athens County will be hosting a free COVID-19 pop-up testing site. That testing site will be through the Ohio Department of Health. It will be from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. August 4th. I'm sorry, August 7th, August 7th. And this will be at Athens High School. The what this says is that anyone can get a no-cost test at this location. No appointment is needed. Anyone can walk in on the scheduled day. Healthcare providers, referral is not needed. So this is truly a pop-up testing where anybody can go in and receive COVID-19 testing. Councilmember Claude Filter?
Two questions about that. This sounds like a wonderful opportunity for the community. But I'm curious, do people have to have symptoms in order to go? And do we know if this is one of those nasal swabs or a throat swab?
I don't have information on that, that level of detail. But what I can tell you is that it doesn't say anywhere on here that someone has to have symptoms to go and be tested.
Oh, this is great, then.
The most important thing is it's free.
Yeah.
There's no charge associated with this. I did mention in committee that I had a conversation earlier today with Governor Dewine. And one of the things that I did stress to the governor is that with Ohio University semester beginning August 24th, that we could certainly use other pop-up testing during that timeframe, or shortly after classes start up, because we still do have a large population of Ohio University students who live off campus. And I think it would be wonderful for them to get free testing and for that testing site to be in the city of Athens somewhere, and maybe, maybe on OU campus. Again, that's not a conversation that I've had with Ohio University, but I've said it. So there it is. And so hopefully, we'll get more pop-up testing from the governor, because he did ask if people would like to see more. And I said, absolutely, we'd like to see more. This week would have been the city's safety day. We would have had safety day. But again, due to COVID-19, that hasn't occurred. But I do want council to certainly honor and give a level of recognition to Mike Stanley. As you're all aware, Mike Stanley Park down at the community center is in honor of one of our city workers who lost his life some time ago. But again, we would have been recognizing, or at least in remembrance of Mike Stanley on safety day. So please keep that in mind. And then the last thing that I have is, and I'll say this every time up until whatever the Census Bureau decides with changing the dates, which to me is, I don't, I don't get it, other than a political play of some type. But but my point being is, if you haven't filled out your census, please fill out your census. And we will be working very hard between now and the end of September to make sure that we can capture as many of the student body as possible, because that's where we're seeing the most need right now in under currently undercounted census tracts in the city. So if you haven't done so, it's quick, it's easy. You can do it online. You can do it via phone. You can do it with mail-in. But please fill out your census. That's all I have, Councilmember, President Nisely.
Thank you, Member Pat, Mayor Patterson. And Auditor Hecht, do you have any report? You're on mute.
One thing I was going to add is just to remind everybody that we are currently being audited by the state. As with many other deadlines, our deadline was postponed from June 30th to July 31st. However, a couple of weeks ago, when they were scheduled to do the onsite visit, is when our COVID cases started spiking. And so they're postponing it indefinitely. So we got an extension to August 31st. And we're just going to continue and try to do as much by scanning and sending information as much as we can, rather than having them come here and have to visit departments to examine records and stuff. So don't know when that will actually come out. But I'll certainly let you know.
Thanks, Auditor Hecht. And it's a lot of work. So thanks for everything you do with that.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to ordinances for first reading. We have six of them tonight, four of which, as we've described in the committee meetings, will be suspended. And these are because they're either prior-year bills or some adjustments that we're needing to make, or in the case of the Columbia road slip, we're wanting to prevent work stoppage. So that's the reason for suspending these these items tonight. Our first one is ordinance 8620. This is an ordinance amending ordinance 7820, amending the 2020 appropriation ordinance, and is introduced by Councilmember Crowe.
Thank you, President Nisely. As mentioned in committee, this is to correct the funds for the grants that the municipal court received from the Supreme Court of Ohio. And I will read section one here. Section one of ordinance 7820, the 2020 appropriation ordinance 13019, is hereby amended to read as follows. The 20 appropriation ordinance is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums: $5,380, general fund, municipal court, 101.106, transaction code 200, for a Supreme Court Technology Grant Award. So the change there is in is the general fund, municipal court, changed from the Clerk of Court Computer Fund. And then the second item is $29,650 going into the Court Capital Fund, 592.106, transaction code 500. And that is a change from, again, the Clerk of Court Computer Fund. I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 08620.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a second from Councilmember Claude Filter, a motion and second to suspend. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowe.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 08620.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Reisner. Okay. And we have had the the reading of the ordinance. Are there any questions or comments from councilmembers or administration? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. The next ordinance is 8720, and this is an ordinance amending the 2020 appropriation ordinance and authorizing the auditor to make inter-fund transfers, introduced by Councilmember Crowe.
Thank you, President Nisely. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 08720.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Smedley.
Thank you. And I'd like to make a motion to--
Oh, and we need to take the vote first.
Oh, sorry.
And the reason for doing this is to be able to make the inter-fund transfer. This is from the sewer debt, I believe.
Correct.
So all those in favor suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowe.
Okay, thank you. As noted, this is amending our appropriation ordinance in order to appropriate $176,700 to the sewer fund for transfer, and also $20,000 to the Arts, Parks and Recreation Income Tax Fund, 273, transaction code 600, for transfer and into Community Center Fund, 271. I'd like to make a motion to approve 08720.
And a second, please.
Second.
Headed by Councilmember Kotsas. Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and second. Do we have any other, any questions or comments? If if none, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 8820 is an ordinance providing for the issuance of $283,300 of notes by the City of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds, for the purpose of renewing notes previously issued to pay part of the costs of improvements to this municipality's sanitary sewer system and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Crowe.
Thank you, President Nisely. I think you've pretty much said it all there. This is all about our sanitary sewer system and the improvements we try to make to that system in order to keep it as well-working and environmentally friendly as possible.
Okay. And Councilmember Claude Filter, you had a question?
Yeah, just in case anybody from the public is tuned in, will the fact that we're doing this cost any of our taxpayers more money?
Not for me.
For the auditor, for Member Crowe, whomever would like to answer.
No, no, the sewer, no tax money. The sewer funds are through the fees that people pay for their sewer sewer. You know, the fact that they have their sewer, they're taken care of. I'm sorry. But yeah.
Fees go up as a result of making this this move?
They actually already did. They before we would enter into a large project like that, that was millions of dollars, this was actually a loan for the engineering and design. But, you know, an examination was done of our revenue over 20 years, at least. And so there is a gradual increase in sewer fees to cover this stuff as we go along. That said, our sewer fund is pretty tight right now, and that might have to be looked at again. But this is a few years old, if you all remember the major improvements to the sewer plant that we did. So, yeah, but no, this is all comes out of the sewer fees that people are already paying.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to ordinance 8920. And this is an ordinance authorizing the payment of a prior year expense and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Crowe.
Thank you, President Nisely. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 08920.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Grace. Okay.
Thank you. This is necessary, as this is a payment of a prior year expense, as discussed in committee. And this is authorizing the auditor to pay the bill of $6,357.86 from the General Fund Parking Enforcement to pay the prior year expense to the smart meter company, the IPS Group, for our parking meters. I'd like to make a motion to approve 08920.
We need to do the vote first on the suspension.
Sorry.
That's okay. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, now, the rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowe.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 08920.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Claude Filter. Okay. And we've had this discussed in committee and explained by Councilmember Crowe. Any other question, any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 9020 is an ordinance amending ordinance 5120, authorizing a contract for construction and construction engineering of the retaining wall and repair of the Columbia Avenue Sewer Sewer Project Number 325, introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Nisely. And because this is for a project that we need to get the funding so that work can continue, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance 09020.
Second. Seconded by Councilmember Claude Filter. Okay. So we have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Grace.
Thank you. And this ordinance, we spoke about just just moments ago in committee, is to increase the appropriation for this, the project on Columbia Avenue, the Columbia Avenue Sewer Project, and is appropriating an additional $75,000 out of the sewer maintenance fund. And that is, that is the gist of this amendment to ordinance 5120.
So we have a motion. And do we have a second for approval?
Oh, yeah, I'm not sure that I actually worded it as a, I'd like to make a motion to adopt this ordinance that we have discussed. Thank you.
And a second, please, Councilmember Kotsas. Okay. So we have a motion and second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 9120 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to execute a mutual aid agreement between the City of Athens and Ohio University for law enforcement assistance. This is introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Nisely. And again, this is the ordinance that was discussed in committee that is authorizing the Service Safety Director to execute a mutual aid agreement. And the full agreement is available on our drive. But as our Service Safety Director, Pyle, told us, this is, this is an agreement that we have had in place for many years, even in this, this form has, or this version has been in place for quite some time. But we've had a mutual aid agreement with the university regarding police services in the city, at least going back to '72, I believe, chief said. So if I, it's a three-page mutual aid agreement. So I won't read the entire document here, but it is available on our drive for any members who wish to read it.
Okay. Thank you very much. And if no other comments or questions about that mutual aid agreement, we'll move on to announcements and other business. We will be in a committee meeting next week. So councilmembers will need to let our Clerk of Council, Debbie Walker, know if you're intending to have a committee meeting for that night. And then we have a series of reappointments to commissions. And as mentioned earlier, it's just so gratifying to hear about all the work that's going on with the different commissions. And sometimes, as always happens, vacancies occur. So we've got these reappointments tonight. And Councilmember Crowe, I believe you have a reappointment to the Environmental and Sustainability Commission?
Yes, the commission would like to reappoint or like approval for the reappointment of Amy DeLac. Amy actually has taken over the chair duties of the commission and has already had a great impact on adding a new section of our sustainability plan on biodiversity and leading the commission this year. So I would like to reappoint Amy DeLac to the Environment and Sustainability Commission.
Okay, so I'll take that as a motion.
It's a motion.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Claude Filter. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. And I don't see any opposed. So that motion carries. Next is an appointment to the Disabilities Commission. I believe Councilmember Smedley, you have it?
Yes, thank you, President Nisely. I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Claire Geisigum to the Disabilities Commission.
Second.
Second. A motion seconded by Councilmember Grace. Okay.
I just wanted to share very quickly that Claire's been the most active nonofficial member of the commission. She's been volunteering now for several months, and she has been doing a wonderful job. She works with HAPCAP and has been a wonderful addition to the commission and looking forward to her official appointment.
Great. Okay, so we have a motion and second for her approval to the Disabilities Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. And none opposed, I don't think. Okay, thank you. So that motion carries. We have an appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission, and I think Councilmember-- We have an appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission, and I think Councilmember Clodfelter has that.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize that. But yeah, the Historic Preservation Commission would like to appoint Mark Snyder, who is a financial advisor in Athens.
Okay, and so we have a motion and a second by Councilmember Fall. Okay, and all those, motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, that's completed. We have appointments to the Community Relations Commission. Councilmember Kotzis has those.
President Isley, thank you, and I would like to thank all the members of the Community Relations Commission for their service. We have two appointments tonight. The first one is Don McCarthy, and Don has been, been present here in, in the Athens community since 2001. She has held a couple of different positions at Wayne National Forest and is currently the Public Relations Officer, and also has worked heavily on the Bayless Trail System. The second person that we have for appointment is Micah McCary. Micah came to Athens in 2003, being an OU graduate, and in 2019, he became Director of the LGBT Center at Ohio University. And I will also want to make a mention, this just came through just right before council, there is also an additional person that will be serving in a volunteer role, so not, no need for a motion on this one, but Raimi, Raimi McCarco. She is retired OU professor from the School of Communication Studies. She retired in 2015 and would like to lend a hand to this, to this committee.
Okay, so we have, and you're making this a motion, I think you.
Yes.
Yes. And do we have a second, and this is for appointments for Don McCarthy and Micah to the Community Relations Commission?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Grace.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? None? Okay, unanimous. Thank you. And thanks to everyone for all the volunteer work that goes on with these commissions. We have several other reports that we need to have motions for approval, one of which is the auditor's report for June.
So moved.
So moved by Councilmember Reisner and seconded by, I can, Councilmember Smedley. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? None. And the other motion that we have is to accept the May and June credit card transactions. Could I have a motion for that? Councilmember Grace, it's moved. And a second for that, please.
Again.
Member Kotzis, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed, nay. Thank you. And we do have this moment that we have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items. I did check with Clerk of Council, Debbie Walker. We did not receive any questions ahead of time, and I see now that we have zero attendees, so no one else from the public at this point viewing our meeting on the Zoom meeting, at least. And our next item of business is to move into executive session, and just very briefly, so I explain this, this operates much the same way on a Zoom meeting as it does when we're in-person in council chambers. We will shortly have a motion, we're, we will do a roll call vote to go into executive session, and we'll list the people that should be in on that. We will, after that vote, we will leave this Zoom meeting. Council members and those other persons from the city administration will join then on a separate Zoom meeting for that executive session. After that, executive session is over, we will end that, and we will then come back to this Zoom meeting for, only very shortly, for purposes of adjournment. So that's, that's our process tonight, just a little bit different, following mechanical buttons rather than walking out the door in the council chambers. So if I could have a motion then for the executive session?
Oh, moved.
And what you need to do, Beth, is you need to say what the purpose is and who will be involved. So in this case, I think it will be the council members and the auditor and the Service Safety Director and the mayor. Did I get the law director? Yeah, the law director. So you need to physically, you need to verbally say all those, and then you need to say for the purpose of, and for what purpose it is, the collective bargaining.
All right. Well, I move that we have an executive session, including all members of council, the law director, the auditor, and the mayor, and the City Safety Services Director, to discuss collective bargaining issues.
Okay, all right. And do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
Councilmember Grace. Okay, so I'll do the, the roll call vote. Councilmember Smedley?
Yes.
Councilmember Reisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Crowell?
Aye.
Councilmember Fall?
Yes.
Councilmember Kotzis?
Aye.
Councilmember Grace?
Aye.
And council, yeah, okay, and I think that's, and Councilmember Clodfelter?
Aye.
Okay, so we will leave this session, and we will see those who were approved in that motion on the other Zoom meeting momentarily. Thank you.